Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dale Ray from Lakeview Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cindy Ritter with Military Moms.
Let us bow our heads. President's Heavenly Father, I know that prayer is powerful and I know it's important. And I recall, Lord, as we pray for our mayor, as we pray for our city council and our leaders, both in this room and throughout the city tonight, I remember the story of Moses facing a battle. And when he became tired, you sent along Aaron and Hur to hold up his arms. And so tonight I pray, let me, let the citizens of Lake Havasu be an Aaron and Hur to our mayor, to our council members, to our leaders, to our fire and police chiefs, to our judges, to all who serve here in Lake Havasu City. May we back them with our prayers and may they be strong. I pray that you give them wisdom for the decisions that they need to make. And I pray that as they administrate this city over the teams, over the workers of this city, I pray that you give them grace as they handle each and every situation that they face. I ask keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned toward your face as they work in the best interest of Lake Havasu City. And the citizens, they are called to serve in the precious mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Thank you. And thank you Cindy for being here. If you'd like to share a little bit about your organization.
Okay, thank you very much for having me. Military Moms has been around for about 10 years. And I've been involved for eight years, I believe it is. I'm the president of the Military Moms. And what Military Moms do, we used to only send care packages and support the military, you know, the moms that had kids deployed or kids in harm's way. And now we focus more on helping our local veterans with food, rent, their electricity, whatever it is that they may need. We work with the Veterans Resource Team. And by doing so, last year, we paid out collectively of all the organizations here in town, we paid out over $15,000 in supporting our veterans that were in need. So we don't do the care packages anymore. We leave that up to the American Legion Auxiliary who sends them every month. But we do send out the Girl Scout cookies that are generously donated back to the Girl Scouts. Then they donate them to us and then we send them out to all of the troops that are deployed. They say they're their favorite boxes they get every year. So that's about it.
Yeah, thank you so much for, for all that your organization does, all of Military Moms, but you are a rock star and we appreciate all of your work on the Veterans Resource Team and the work that you do for Lake Havasu City.
It makes my heart happy.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses?
Here.
Mayor Kalshahe?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Lynn?
May we remove item 5.4, please?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item 5.4.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. I think we're waiting on you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And now we will hear item 5.4, which is approve the cooperative purchase of janitorial supplies from Hilliard, Inc. Mr. Keen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What we're looking for tonight is approval of a cooperative purchase with Hilliard Incorporated for janitorial supplies in our parks, as well as the Aquatic and Community Center. This, this process kind of started during the pandemic. We were struggling with our, our vendor that we were using to provide us with the product. So we started looking at some different options. And Hilliard came in to be our, our best option for a one stop shop. In between times, we've been reaching from different companies, Amazon, anywhere we can get, get all our products. So this is a one stop shop for us. And that's what we're looking for approval tonight. Without taking any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Keen. Councilmember Lynn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just trying to get some clarification, because I believe a couple of months ago, we approved the janitorial services down at the Aquatic Center for like the actual services. So when it had on there, the last part of it says approve cooperative purchase for janitorial supplies, equipment and services. So I was just curious what that service part means.
If they have to come in and service any of the equipment that they provide us to dispense the, the chemicals that they use for cleaning.
Oh, that's all the clarification. I just want to make sure it wasn't for additional service, janitorial services.
Yeah, no, they won't be cleaning anything.
Yeah. And as Mr. Keen mentioned, one of our large regional supply houses in the area is no longer doing business. So that's kind of upended businesses in our town, as well as obviously impacts what we need here as a city. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dolan?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of janitorial supplies, equipment and services from Hilliard Incorporated utilizing Mojave Educational Services Cooperative, Inc. contract.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Next item on our agenda is item six, which is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is to announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, two alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 6.2, our city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A few things to report on this evening, including what we have to celebrate since our last, our last council meeting. We held our, the graduation for, in our inaugural supervisory academy class, which is made up of 23 employees. They graduated from our supervisor Excellence Academy, led by our HR Director, Dr. Hamilton, and our collaborative efforts. The supervisors participated in a year long program, which partnered with Arizona At Work and Mojave Community College. Every Wednesday for an entire year, the class met at Mojave Community College to learn about leadership skills, dive into city policies, and build a network cohort with each other. We're very proud of this group of employees and look forward to celebrating their future successes within the organization. Now that they have the skills to do a much better job, they also have the skills to improve the services to our community. In addition to the classes that they took, they participated in a project at the end of the year that benefits the community as a whole. And they selected a Havasu Water Smart Demonstration Garden. The space is located at the Police Department Campus at the corner of Spazano Way and McCulloch Boulevard. The garden inspires responsible and sustainable water use, where residents, businesses and commercial developers can view a wide variety of water efficient plants for their own landscape and water conservation endeavors. The class, thanks to a lot of generous donors throughout the community, we'd like to thank Keep Havasu Beautiful, Home Depot, Lowe's, Desert Land Group, a, excuse me, a Rock Yard Havasu Enterprises, Star Nursery, and South Side Science. The class was able to do that, that construct that entire garden based on donations. There will be a ribbon cutting project that'll be scheduled on Earth Day, which is April 22nd, coming up very quickly. Congratulations to all that participated. And again, thank you to Dr. Hamilton for leading this effort. And of course, we celebrated the new municipal courthouse with an official ribbon cutting ceremony. Special guests included Penny Pugh from Congressman Gosar's office, Arizona Supreme Court Chief Justice Robert M. Brutenell, Arizona Supreme Court Vice Chief Justice Anne A. Scott Timmer, and Mojave County Presiding Judge Steve Moss. Several judicial officers, city council, city staff, Lake Havasu Chamber of Commerce, and other community members also attended the celebration. A lot of work, a lot of effort over the last several years. So it was a, a great day to celebrate that moment. Mayor, city council members and staff celebrated Read Across America Day at various schools, including Talisys Preparatory Academy, Smoke Tree Elementary, and Nautilus Elementary School. Our city, of course, is committed to promoting reading as the catalyst for our students' academic success and preparation for our future workforce. Hot off the presses, we have the Fire Department, who recently completed our annual report for 2023, offering a summary of the department's continuous efforts to alleviate public, excuse me, to elevate public safety across the city. The report details the department's accomplishments and provides key metrics on fire safety. Please go to our website, LHCaz.gov, to view a copy of the report. And lastly, we're pleased to announce that Administrative Services received the Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada, otherwise known as GFPA, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its fiscal year for 2324 budget, our current budget year. Once again, the, the award is a form of acknowledgement in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and is a reflection of the commitment of the governing body and staff to meet the highest principles of governmental budgeting. The GFPA is a nonprofit professional association that serves nearly 19,000 appointed and elected local, state and provincial level government officials and other finance practitioners. We're very, very proud of the whole Administrative Services team, and especially to, to you Jill Olson, Allison Bloom, and Angie Bakken for their continued efforts and dedication to the, to this process. With that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. We'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During each of our public hearings, there will be an opportunity for citizens to address the city council and engage in a conversation with us during each of those items. We'll open up the public hearing at each of those items. You'll make your way to the podium to state your name for the record. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up for that part of the discussion. We ask if you do want to engage with us, just come up to the podium and address the council directly. So just address towards us. I will be able to address any questions, comments, thoughts that you may have on the items. At the end of our public hearings, we will have a call to the public, and I will go over the steps of call to the public when we get to that section. So we'll start with item 7.1, which is Series Nine Liquor License, Liquor Store Liquor License for Hacienda Minimart, located at 3618 South Jamaica Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Wendy Reichert has applied for a Series Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Hacienda Minimart, located at 3618 South Jamaica Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Nine Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also available to answer any questions on this license.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number Nine Liquor Store Liquor License for Hacienda Minimart, 3618 South Jamaica Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Moses.
I think.
Is it, is it, who's the, the second is Councilmember Lane? Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Lane. Any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Oh, thanks, David.
Can I second it as well?
Yeah, I wasn't really sure what happened. I thought I only heard Vice Mayor Moses and the whole thing, and the screen's telling me different.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item, item 7.2 is a Series Ten Beer and Wine Liquor Store License for BRB, located at 3569 McCulloch Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Wendy Reichert has applied for a Series Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for BRB, located at 3569 McCulloch Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Ten Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
David, is it okay if I take this one?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, thank you. And to the applicants, I appreciate the continued investment in our community and good luck with everything. But Mayor, I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number Ten Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for BRB, 3569 McCulloch Boulevard.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 7.3, Adopt Resolution Number 24-3730, Appointing Members to Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustments. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment as a regular member to the Board of Adjustment. An appointment is necessary to fill a regular member vacancy. Currently, the Board of Adjustment has two regular members and two alternate member vacancies. The application review panel interviewed, conducted interviews for the Board of Adjustment on March 4th, 2024, and recommends that Brian McMahon be appointed as a regular member with a term ending June 30th, 2026. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here today to answer any questions from the city council.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council? Would the applicant like to come say hello to, to the council?
Good afternoon. My name's Brian McMahon. Happy to be here and happy to help serve the community. Happy to answer any questions as well.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for, for applying for the position. We appreciate it. Yeah. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-3730, appointing Brian McMahon as a regular member to the Lake Havasu City Board of Adjustments with a term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. The next item is item 7.4, Adopt Ordinance Number 24-1327, Amending City Code Section 2.12.090, Elections Scheduling Regarding the Primary and General Election Dates. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, on February 9th, 2024, the governor signed House Bill 2785, changing the date of the primary election from August 6th, 2024, to July 30th, 2024. This bill became effective immediately on February 9th and requires amendments to Lake Havasu City Code Section 2.12.090, Elections Scheduling, to align with state statutes regarding the primary and general election dates. Staff is proposing the following amendments, and they're included in your packets, striking out A and B and replacing with the city's primary election and general election, if necessary, shall be held and conducted in accordance with state law. This item was introduced at the last meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Williams, for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. I would just like to commend you, Ms. Williams, for bringing forth language that is going to be compatible for future. So obviously, this makes it much more efficient should state law change in the future by, by doing it this way. And I appreciate that. Any other, yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1327, amending City Code Section 2.12.090, Elections Scheduling. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion?
Second.
Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item 7.5, Adopt Ordinance Number 24-1328, Amending the Zoning Classification and District Boundary for 2205 Victoria Farms Road, APN 120-03-045, a 30 acre portion of planned development number 0700200005, from light industrial planned development district to industrial district. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular request was originally brought to council on June 13th of 2023, and the council postponed the vote until the violations for illegal grading, illegal storage containers were remedied. Since then, the owner has satisfied the illegal grading per the Lake Havasu City Engineering Division removes all the storage containers. Go over the area, just, that was just an update on the history. Area map, here's the location of the subject property, north side of Victoria Farms Road, east of US 95, which is over here on this side. Advance of one slide here, access to properties from Chinnewith Drive to Victoria Farms Road, subject property is about 30 acres in size, and the surrounding properties are largely undeveloped except for outdoor storage and a storage unit complex currently under construction, which is on this LIPD parcel here. Properties to the west and north are zoned light industrial, properties to the south are zoned light industrial and agricultural preservation. The properties to the east are zoned light industrial PD and industrial, and that would be, that's the little piece of industrial right there, which has the, the natural gas facility. And so one more slide, this was the, in 2007, the approved planned development that was initially placed over all the parcels that include the subject parcel. And this slide is particularly there to show the pieces that have been removed since. This property on the very far west end was removed previously, and then the northeast quadrant of that, of that same quarter section was removed, quarter quarter section was removed previously, as was the industrial zone piece to the east where the natural gas facilities. The LIPD zone that's currently over the property does not allow development outside of the approved planned development, which was, per this plan, mostly residential. Therefore, the applicant is asking to rezone the property to industrial for future use. Let me advance this one slide here to track map. The property is served by a private ingress egress easement, and that also serves the neighbor that's on this little piece here on the northeast corner. There are accesses through that easement as well. Future development of the property will require the appropriate design review and building permits. Any lot alterations or splits will require review and approval by city staff. And no objections to requests received from any other reviewing agencies or departments. And Ms. Mayor, that completes my staff report on this, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Mr. Gilbert? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Would the applicant like to make any comments? No? Okay. All right, any questions from members of the council? For, yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I read in here that planning and zoning denied the request in their vote. Do we know why?
The statement that was written in the staff report regarding that here, the Plan Commission heard this request at its May 3rd, 2023 meeting, and the motion to approve was denied by a vote of three to four. The dissenting voters did not state the reason they voted to deny the request.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane, this, this is a pretty interesting case in front of us. So when planning and zoning heard it almost a year ago, so May of 2023, it came to council and was it June, Mr. Gilbert, you mentioned of 23, there was several outstanding code violations. And I believe, if my recollection serves me, the code violations is why P&amp;Z was split on that, as was the council when it came before council, and that's why we elected to take no action. So I hopefully that.
It does. And I, and I recall the item, and I was very vocal at that time myself about bringing this back later. I just wanted to have the discussion, remember the reasons why we voted no of that. Yes. Thank you.
But Mr. Gilbert, you did report that all of the code violations are, they're now resolved?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Took almost a year working with them, but the storage containers are all removed, and the site is more or less back to where it originally was prior to the violations.
Thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, by removing the PD, will that affect the, the access road to the adjacent property?
No, sir, that will not. The easement is an ingress egress easement that's recorded, that that's permanent, that will stay there in perpetuity. The zoning does not affect the location or purpose of any easements that already exist.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Please. I move to adopt ordinance number 24-1328, amending the zoning classification and district boundaries for 2205 Victoria Farms Road, from light industrial slash planned development to industrial.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 7.6 is approve the multiple purchase of a 2024 F-550 regular cab four by two with crane, 2024 F-550 regular cab XL four by two, 2024 F-250 regular cab, and 2024 F-550 regular cab four by four from Santan Auto Partners LLC. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, rumors are true. I'm here to buy a truck. As always, we use a point system to determine when our vehicles need to be replaced. These four vehicles are well above the 32 point margin, which we factor in the year of miles, the repairs that have been done, the repairs that are needed. And we get it out to the directors or division leaders and let them know that it's time to get them replaced. These vehicles range from 2005 to 2009, and all of them are at either 38 points or above. One of them sits at 47 points, and I believe that one needs a transmission. We're looking to approve these purchases for a total of $301,727.18. With that, I'll answer any questions.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I have to ask. So do we get those this year, five years from now, 10 years from now?
Feeling lucky, you want to?
Yeah. I kind of wonder, we should just order for the next 10 years and then just pay for them when they come in.
I'm hoping to get it within the next fiscal year.
Okay.
The service trucks aren't quite as behind as like the F-250s are, so we'll see how it goes. I have no promises, though.
Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. No, I just wanted to commend the staff on how well they take care of the vehicles that we do have. When you look at the age of the, the newest vehicle is what, 14 years old, 15 years old? You guys maintain the fleet very well, and we get a lot of use out of these vehicles. It does appear that we're buying vehicles, but we do need these vehicles in order to do the operations. But just, just want to commend the staff on how well you guys maintain the, the vehicles that we do have, so that we get those 15, 20. Last council meeting, we had a vehicle. Last council meeting, we had a vehicle that was 30 years old that we were replacing, so keep up the good work.
I appreciate that. Don Gable and his crew do great work at Fleet.
Any other comments or questions? All right, this is public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. I believe Mr. Young mentioned this, but all of these items are in the budget, they're planned for, it's just the, the expense is getting approved now for, for the actual purchase. Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, motion?
Please.
I move to approve the purchase of a 2024 F-550 Regular Cab 4x2 with crane, a 2024 F-550 Regular Cab XL 4x2, a 2024 F-250 Regular Cab 4x2, and a 2024 F-550 Regular Cab 4x4 vehicle in the amount of $301,727.18, utilizing the cooperative purchase contract CTR 059323 through Arizona State Procurement Office with Santan Auto Partners LLC. Subject to release of any amended manufacturer's official published pricing and discount off of the manufacturer's retail price by the Arizona State Purchasing Office, and authorize the city manager to approve and amend adjustments.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 7.7 is approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Holbrook Asphalt LLC and purchase of HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Payment Preservation Services. Mr. Young?
Good evening once again. It's time to do some more maintenance on our roadways, this being the newer asphalt. We'd like to put out about 65,000 square yards of this HA5. We've been looking at it for about a year. We've contacted several other public works departments, and they rave about it. This, this fog seal lasts four to seven years. We contacted a couple cities in California, one of them said that they've had it down since 2015, and it's still doing a fabulous job for them. Kingman and both, Phoenix, said they love it and are continuing to use it. So we're gonna give it a shot, and we're gonna do the downtown area with Main Street from a coma to Smoke Tree, Swanson as well, Scott Drive in Mulberry, and then we're gonna move out to the new asphalt on the island and take care of the island path and the two parking lots out there. That will come to a total of $184,641.58, and I ask for your approval to make this happen.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Young? Councilmember Campbell?
This just makes my heart smile. For all these people out here, we, I know how quickly our roads deteriorate, and this is an amazing product. Holbrook Asphalt Number 5, I appreciate it. Everybody be patient, this will take a little bit longer to cure, but as Bill was stating, that this will absolutely extend the life of our roads, and we will not need as much chip seal, which will, you guys may be happier. Eventually, we'll need that on this road, but we hope to extend the life of these roads. And I want to thank everybody at the council and all the staff that are absolutely looking at early pavement preservation for our roads. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, what two parking lots are you referring to on the island?
The parking lot at Beach Comer and McCulloch, and the one right in front of the football field. We redo them both as we did the island.
Okay, those are city-owned properties?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Please.
I move to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement with Holbrook Asphalt LLC. Authorize the city manager to execute the agreement through June 30, 2025. Authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew the agreement for one additional one-year term, and approve the purchase of HA5 in the amount of $184,641.58 plus applicable taxes.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you again. This is good. This is good stuff, Mayor.
Mayor, doing good work. Yes. Item eight is the Call to the Public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. This is, we can have a two-way conversation, but you can come to the podium, state your name for the record. We can listen intently, but we can't reply other than responding to criticism or directing staff to, to do something based on your comments potentially. Again, the light indicator box is next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means you have one minute remaining, red means that your time is up. Again, we ask that you address the council directly. You don't have to sign up, and we didn't have anyone sign up, but would anyone like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item nine is current events. Are there any council committee reports? We did have, from the Mojave County Water Authority, we did have a meeting today about that, and we reviewed the Lower Basin State Alternative for management of the river system post-2026. So more to come. We've seen some of it in the news over the last week or so, since it was originally released last week, but there'll be more information on that. There's still a lot of work to do, but the guidelines in which the system is managed right now goes through 2026, and so it'd be post those guidelines, and we'll share that information as more becomes available and the negotiations continue with the Basin States. Any other council committee reports? All right, our future meetings, our next meeting is on Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, 5:30 PM. It is a regular meeting. It also will be the first time that we meet at our new community room at the courthouse, so we will not be in this space that we've been in for 25-plus years. We'll actually be in the space at the new municipal courthouse off of Akoma. Mr. Knutson, is that 92 Akoma? Okay, 92 Akoma Boulevard is the address for it. We will obviously post that in multiple areas, but we will see everyone there. Give yourself a little bit extra time when you come, because we are upstairs and we're all new to this, and so just so we can get everyone in and get everyone where they need to be in time for the meeting. There also, because we're in a courthouse facility, there is security screening that occurs as well. So just give yourself some time as we make our way through this and kind of learn what a new space looks like for us, but really excited to showcase this space and, and get folks into this new public space over there. But that'll be our next meeting, again, on Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, 5:30 PM. And then we also will have a regular meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, 5:30 PM as well. Are there any future discussion items? Item 12, motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you for being here. Be kind. We'll see you next time.